I'll call the meeting to order. Thank you for coming to the Mendon Select Board meeting. Call the meeting to order at 5:35. And let's stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. All right, adding or deleting items to the agenda. We are going to add under number nine, as number nine, a review of appointed offices, and a correction under employment opportunities.
Val, I just also want to clarify the under policy adoption conflict of interest in purchasing policy and conflict of interest in ethical conduct policy. There's two of them. And it looks like Seth just arrived.
Policy. So the conflict of interest policy and the conflict of interest in ethical conduct. Ethical conduct.
Hey, guys.
Hi, Seth.
How are you?
You haven't missed anything? We're good.
Excellent.
And do you want to add that we're accepting letters of interest for the constable position or put that under announcements?
That's an appointed office, so that will be discussed under your review of appointed offices.
All right. Okay, first, under administrative matters, oh, I'm sorry. Let's make a motion to approve the agenda with those changes. Do you want me to specify the changes again?
I've got them. I can, I'll move that we accept the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, under administrative matters, letter A, our annual organizational matters, to elect a chair to begin.
Could I make a motion now?
You can.
I'd like to move that Val be the chair of the select board.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Electing a vice chair to the board. I'll make a motion to appoint Seth to the vice chair. Do we have a second?
May I second? I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And to elect a clerk of the board. Sarah, do you want to give a little rundown exactly what that is, please?
The clerk, the clerk of the board is the person that prepares the agendas and the minutes for the meetings. And historically, it's been the town administrator. Correct.
I'll make a motion to appoint Sarah Tully, the clerk of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, moving on to number four, the meeting schedule. If everyone has had a chance to look over that or notice any conflicts with this schedule and their schedule. I personally had none that I, that I would know thus far.
The only one I noted in that, I mean, it's the day of the eclipse. And I'm going to be up in Colchester with my family and driving back in the evening. So I don't know if I, I might have to do the meeting from the car if we have it that night. But if it's only me, I can work around it.
That's fine.
That's the first meeting in April.
Yep.
So I, I don't know if Seth had a chance to look at that meeting schedule. There were a number of meetings in 2024 and 2025 up until town meeting next year that conflicted with some holidays as well on Mondays. So the first, the first question is the next meeting, because I am unavailable on the 25th. Whether you wanted to change that meeting to combine the meetings of the 25th and the 8th, or whether you wanted to conduct a meeting on the 25th and reschedule the meeting for the 8th possibly on Monday, April 1st. So the question is, would you like to conduct the meeting without me on the 25th? Or combine the two meetings to April 1st in order to avoid having a meeting on the 8th?
I would prefer to have it there. To combine them?
I think the first would work.
Especially if we're appointing officers.
Yeah, so most of the terms of officers expire on March 31st, so having it on the 1st would be fine.
Does that work for you, Seth?
Yeah, that's fine with me. That's fine.
Okay, I'll warn that one accordingly. And then the next holiday is Memorial Day, which is May 27th, observed. And I had made a suggestion of possibly changing that meeting to the 20th.
That would work for me.
I'm fine with that.
So I'm fine with that. The only conflicts that I may have is I'm coaching Collins' baseball team this year.
Okay.
So, I don't, we don't really have a schedule yet, I guess is what I'm saying. But I would definitely, I'm fine with it as far as we go now.
Yeah, and Seth, once that schedule comes out, just let me know what your conflicts are.
You got it. Will do.
Perfect. Moving on, October 14th is a holiday, and I had suggested moving it up one week to October 7th.
I don't have a problem with that.
That's fine.
Yes. Fine, fine with me as well.
Perfect. The next one, and these are also subject to change if needed later on. It's just I like to publish the whole year's schedule from the beginning. November 11th is a holiday, so the suggestion is to move that to November 4th.
Okay.
And then the December meetings, we do try to move around a little bit in order to avoid the holiday week between Christmas and New Year's. This is a budget cycle as well, so we like to get the budget completed. All but very last-minute changes in January, we like to complete that in December. So the meetings in December would be December 9th and December 16th.
And you think that 16th gives us enough time?
Yeah, so we, we'll start the budget process in October and complete all that we have control over by December 16th. Then we'll break for the holidays. And in January, we just usually receive last-minute numbers to update, like the Rutland County tax, for example. Signing the warning, the budget has to be completed by the end of January. And that's when we're publishing all the reports for the town report as well. So, and those are the only holiday conflicts between now and town meeting next year. So I'll update that schedule so that we can post it on the website.
Thank you.
And everybody's comfortable with the meeting start time of 5:30?
I am.
Okay, if we could just do a motion to set the meeting schedule?
I'll make a motion to set the 2024-25 meeting schedule.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number five is our rules of procedure. Everybody got this beforehand? Were there any questions? Specific?
And there are no changes from this procedure from last year?
Seth, anything on your end? Any questions with the rules of procedure?
No, I'm good, Val.
A motion to accept. Is that what you need?
Adopt.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt the rules of procedure 2024.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Moving on to number six, indicating the newspaper of general circulation.
Val, that would be the Rutland Herald.
I'll make a motion to approve the Rutland Herald to be our newspaper of general circulation.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And number seven, our posting locations are as follows, the town office, the town garage, the town rec area, the Mendon website, Facebook, and front porch forum. And I'll make a motion to approve these posting locations for 2024.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight, appointing a pound keeper.
The pound keeper is a statutory term. We also have an animal control officer. So in Mendon, it's an animal control officer, which has been Rod McQuaid.
I'm sorry, you said that is the same as the animal control?
Yeah, the pound keeper is a statutory term that we're supposed to appoint a pound keeper. And we utilize an animal control officer as well in Mendon, so they would be the same person.
Are you looking for a motion for Rod McQuaid?
Motion to appoint Ron, yes.
I'll move that we appoint Rob McQuaid to pound keeper.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And our tree warden, we no longer have fence viewers.
And the tree warden has historically been the road commissioner. And I would recommend that you appoint Chris Baird, the tree warden.
I'll make a motion to appoint Chris Baird, our road commissioner, as our tree warden.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And number nine, we added the appointing of offices here.
So it was the review of offices. So I just wanted to have a brief discussion about the appointments. We have a number of them. We typically do them the second meeting after town meeting. Terms typically expire on the 31st of, of March. So with us rescheduling the next meeting to 4-1, we'll be accepting letters of interest for various positions between now and then. We will be looking to appoint, do you want me to run down through the, the list of appointments or should we just post them on the?
Um. If you don't mind reading them, is that okay?
Um, so the first one is constable is moving from an elected position to a appointed position effective this year. We've received two letters of interest so far. Lemmy Carter had, had the elected office that expires in 2024. And then based on town meeting, the voters approved moving this in 2021. They, they, once his term expired, it moved to an appointed position. So we will be making that appointment at the next meeting. I do encourage representative of the select board to sit down and discuss law enforcement opportunities with the applicants of interest. I think there's some different ideas that can be discussed and before you make that appointment.
I would like to be on that committee if nobody objects.
So I would do if that's okay. I can do any value.
Good idea to have both of you.
Yep. Okay, so I'm just going to set up a time that we can meet to discuss different qualifications and their letters of interest. And then the appointment will be conducted at the next meeting, April 1st.
Okay.
The next one I wanted to go over is the appointment of clerk and treasurer. Instead of going over details of that right now, I think we need to wait until after we make an announcement under number four. Or would you like to break the agenda and this, and make an announcement at this time?
Either way, I, I mean, I, I think now is fine. Just keep it flowing to the positions that we need to appoint.
Okay. And then under, we have road commissioner, administrative support for the road commissioner. That is a position that I have held in order to support our road commissioner. The duties in that is to help apply for grants and, and approve either access permits or overweight permits. The town service officer has been held by Mary Ann Reich. Planning commission has three reappointments. I've reached out to them to see if they wanted to continue on the planning commission, as well as there is one vacancy on the planning commission. The energy committee is usually appointed by members of the planning commission. And we have one reappointment and one vacancy on the energy committee. The zoning board of adjustment, Jack Cannelli, is up for reappointment. And there's one vacancy on the zoning board of adjustment. Town recreation, we have a reappointments of two positions. Cemetery commission, all needs to be reappointed. And we have one vacancy left by Bill on the cemetery commission. Rutland Regional Planning Commission is up for reappointment. That has historically been Larry Curcell. Rutland Regional Emergency Management Committee. This is currently Lemmy Carter as the director of emergency management and Val Taylor, chair of the select board. So depending on who is appointed to constable, that, you know, may make a change in that recommendation. Rutland County Solid Waste District Representative currently is vacant. And we need an appointed position as Mendon's representative to the Rutland County Solid Waste District. And the Root Force Steering Committee is finalizing the report under this grant. But their term expired on March 31st, 2024. So we'll reappoint the steering committee to carry out the rest of that grant project. And that's it. Any questions?
So with these vacancies, do we go out and recruit? How do we?
We post them, Megan, and we accept letters of interest of people that want to fill those positions. They can contact me to answer any questions regarding the roles and responsibilities. But these positions are something that is indicated in the town report with their terms expiring, with a plea to people that if they want to throw their name in the hat, that they would contact me and submit a letter of interest for you to review and be able to ask any questions prior to the appointment.
For us to go out and contact people and ask them if they're interested and if they are to?
Yep, that's, that's definitely appropriate.
Okay.
I have a quick question too. Just that the position of like Lemmy holds the emergency management position and also the, the constable, is that normally held by the same person?
They, they are two. Yeah, they're two separate positions. Historically, it has been the same person. But the elected position, the, the director of emergency management is appointed. And now this is the first time that the constable is being appointed. It was elected, so the voters had control over who that person was. Historically, that director of emergency management prepares the local emergency management plan, which develops relationships and identifies who's who in order to respond in an emergency. Whenever there's a declared emergency, whether it's declared by FEMA or just a town emergency. And there's a whole job description that goes along with just the director of emergency management. So they are two separate, separate positions.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question? All of these positions will be posted on the website, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and my second question is, do you think it's prudent that the constable and the emergency management person are the same people? Or should they be separate since the emergency management person is more the overseer of and the coordinator of? The constable would be more of the person out in the field?
So that's up to the select board. It, again, historically, it's been the same person. Just to deal with law enforcement and emergency management altogether. But that's up to the board.
Could that be, since you've had a couple people interested in the job, the constable position, would that be, you know, if we had, if we appointed one, would it be an approach to second to be at that position? Or do you think that they would be, that wouldn't be appropriate?
No, I'd certainly discuss that when we meet with them on, on law enforcement capabilities versus. The constable position is a stipend position that only deals with the statutory requirements of the constable, which doesn't have any law enforcement capabilities unless they're certified. A certified law enforcement officer with the state of Vermont. So the, the job description of the constable is very basic in that there's like five different responsibilities, statutory responsibilities. Law enforcement in Mendon is handled by the law enforcement staff budget, which we're currently under contract with the Rutland County Sheriff. But certainly, that, that contract is renewed annually as of July 1st. So we would be entertaining different ideas on how to provide law enforcement in Mendon. And that's all I have. We, we weren't going to do any appointments tonight. We're just discussing what is coming down the pike. And if you have any questions about the positions, please let me know between now and the next meeting. And I can provide you with whatever information I have on them.
Thank you.
Seth? Okay, letter B, policy review and adoption. We did receive all of these before the meeting. And did everyone have a chance to review these? So just the board rules of procedure.
Right, that is the one that you adopted above with the rules of procedure for the select board. So you've already adopted that this evening.
The open meeting law compliance policy is next. Are there any questions?
So just, this is a readoption of a policy that we adopt every year. And essentially, it takes the open meeting law and spells out how we're going to comply with the open meeting law based on the office hours and the personnel that we have to post agendas and warnings and, you know, meet the obligations set forth. It also allows opportunity for your boards and commissions to also make sure that they are complying with the open meeting law policy. And so we do have a form for them to review and sign so that everybody's on the same page with how we're going to comply with the open meeting law policy. So we would be entertaining a motion to adopt.
I move that we, we adopt the open meeting law compliance policy.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next, we have the Conflict of Interest Policy. Not to be confused with the Conflict of Interest and Ethical Conduct.
So the First Conflict of Interest Policy and Purchasing Policy meets the federal guidelines of procurement procedures. And that would be a, that was adopted in 2021. It has no changes, but I would like you to acknowledge for the minutes that it's reviewed and you will comply with the purchasing policy. At this time, you would also complete a form, a disclosure form, that would indicate any conflict of interests that you would have prior to making any contractual agreements or decision-making on spending.
I don't think I have any, but is that a form you would send us? Is that attached?
Yeah, that should have been an attachment to the email for you to review. Yeah.
Yeah, I saw they relied for the three of us to sign.
The disclosure, yeah, the disclosure form has a section that says, "I don't have any conflicts to report."
I will make a motion to approve the reviewed Conflict of Interest and Purchasing Policy, stating that we will comply with this 2024 along with the disclosure form. Is that okay?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And not to forget the Conflict of Interest and Ethical Conduct Policy. If there are no questions, I'll make a motion to approve this also for 2024.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And number four was fairly lengthy. The Town Road and Bridge Standards.
The Town Road and Bridge Standards are, have been adopted. It's something that you need to review because the town has to agree that we are building our roads up to these standards. So there is a separate compliance certification that you sign attached to that, that you have reviewed the Town and Road Bridge Standards and that you have an updated road inventory system that we keep updated, which we have all of the above.
Are there any questions here?
Nope.
Do you need a motion for this, Sarah?
Well, the motion would be to sign the Road and Bridge Standards Compliance Form.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the Select Board will sign the compliance form for the Town and Bridge Standard. Standards.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And will this be in the office as well?
Yeah, I'll print everything out and have them ready for you to sign. Megan, just so you know, if you've gone into the office and taken your oath, correct? So they assigned you a mailbox?
No, but I will go back in and see that.
Okay, so all of the, all of the forms to be signed will most likely be placed in Val's box, and you can pull them out from there so that everybody can sign.
Good.
Moving on to Letter C, 2024-25 Goals and Objectives. Review and Development, and we did receive that list.
So this is the first opportunity for Megan to be able to review and comment on the Goals and Objectives. This is a document that's fluid. We update this and move priorities around. It's used as a community or a communication tool between the Select Board and the staff on prioritizing projects and moving through them throughout the year. So no decisions have to be made tonight, but we will want to finalize this at the next meeting or the meeting after, just to get everybody on the same page on what projects are priorities to be able to move through and delegate staff to make sure they get completed. So if anybody had any.
Today, it does seem like it might be a while before we can, you know, it looks like we have some work to do before we can really finalize that.
Right, yep, we have to add things to it and move things around as far as the priorities.
Yes.
So if you all could communicate your thoughts and additions, subtractions with me between now and the next meeting, I'll be able to update that.
Okay.
Document.
Number 14, Leamy and I will be working on the LEMP.
Soon. The LEMP has to be adopted by May, by May 1st. So that is something that most likely will be adopted probably at the next meeting to check it off the list. And that is something that is updated and adopted annually. So if there's any questions on specific items on that, let me know. Otherwise, we can move on to signing orders.
Okay.
And Letter D, sorry, did I cut somebody off? Somebody talking? Have we all had a moment to look over the payroll and the warrant? If there are no questions or comments, I'll make a motion to approve orders for March 11, 2024 in the amount of $41,983.92. Payroll for March 5, 2024 in the amount of $12,192.35.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And we had minutes for Seth and I to approve February 12 of this year and February 26 of this year. Any questions or comments with those?
Nope, I'm good, though.
I'll make a motion to approve both of those minutes.
Seth, I just need a second. Did you second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Perfect.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And under announcements, we just wanted to post again that the season, obviously, is back and forth with sun and snow, and it's mud season. So the roads are posted. And please pay attention to these signs and respect the roads, our dirt roads in town. I would appreciate that.
I have a comment on that, too, a little bit, if I can, Val.
Sure.
I just, I know I've heard a lot of, just a lot of talk about Wheelerville Road. How are we looking up there? Does anybody, has Chris mentioned anything? Or updated how it's hanging in there?
Yeah, yeah, that's a conversation daily. So mud season is upon us. Wheelerville Road is posted with signs on either end, the top of the notch road and at the intersection of Route 4 that Wheelerville Road is, and then upper notch, the upper portion of the notch road is posted to residential traffic only in order to limit the amount of traffic on those roads to only what is necessary. We're doing our best to try to keep it, trying to dry it out as much as possible. But there's definitely sections of the road that mud season is greatly upon us.
Yeah.
Yeah, which the whole state is experiencing an early mud season this year. And it's especially bad, especially when we get, you know, we have soft ground, unfrozen ground that we just got 12 inches of snow on, that it's going to warm up and melt. So it's really important for people that don't need to be on those roads right now to not travel on those roads. Yeah.
Are we, are we trying to save on salt or trying not to salt too much up that way, I would assume?
On salt? So we don't salt our gravel roads?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not trying to save on sand. It's just really allowing the roads to dry out and have an opportunity to drain. You can't grade the roads at this time because it's dewy. I mean, this information is more for the rest of the board than you, Seth, because you know how to. But sometimes, you know, putting additional sand on it is gonna just create more mud. So, yeah, so it's a balance. When it gets really bad, we can put some gravel on it, but that also retains the moisture that's already in the road. So, you know, the best maintenance is that we try to keep as much traffic off of it as possible.
Yeah.
But, yeah, the guys are monitoring that daily. But as we know, the reason why mud season exists is because of the freeze saw cycle in the springtime, and there's water coming out of these roads and drying them up, so.
Yep, yep, every year.
Yeah. We have received complaints, though. We've received complaints about mud season.
That's why I just want to make sure it's being addressed. And hopefully, as soon as we can get on it, we can get somebody up there with a grader, maybe just to, just to cut the edges, to release that water, especially if we get a lot of ruts.
Sure. Right, so, and for the rest of the board, as you get ruts in the road, especially on hills, the water is just going to run down the ruts. On flat portions, it's a different issue. The water sits on the road and doesn't shed off of it. So either way, you know, it damages the roads to have the ruts in there because it retains the water or creates further erosion of the road.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry, Val.
No, that's fine. I was, I was actually just on the road head to toe the other day, and I was expecting a mess, and I thought the road was in great shape, but that was three days ago.
Up on Wheelerville, Val?
Head to toe, yep.
Okay.
Yep. Moving on to public comment.
No, we have another announcement.
Oh, we do, we do. We are, we will be looking to fill Nancy Gondello's position. We have received her resignation, and she will be done, I believe, the 26th of this month. And we are very thankful for every day she's given us exceptional service. And her position will also be, we will be looking to fill that position.
Like to, I'd like to wish Nancy good luck and thank her personally for all that she's done. Great. Wish her luck on her future endeavors.
Thank you, Seth.
I second that.
Thank you, Megan.
I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you.
So do we form a committee now to deal with that and the other openings in the town? Or is that an ongoing with the other opening?
So we're going to talk about filling those positions under, later on in the agenda, under employment opportunities. So what we've done is change that from one full-time position available until two full-time positions, and we'll discuss the details of that. I also would like to take the opportunity to thank Nancy for her dedicated service to the town of Mendon there. We've worked together for 22 years, and there were times that there were literally no roads to get to Mendon through flooding, and Nancy was there by 7:00 a.m. I don't know how she got there, but she got there. And she has had the same level of service to the town of Mendon through elections and just her role as town clerk and town treasurer of this town and always rolling with, if anyone asked her to do something, she would step up and gladly help out the town in any way that she could. And she has big shoes to fill, and she will be sorely missed.
Thanks very much, Sarah.
You're welcome. We do have a hand raised for public, or we have a hand raised from Carol or Brian Gates.
Hi, it's Carol. First off, I would like to thank Nancy for all of her service. Personally, her stamp and signature is on my marriage certificate. So it really means all of, it means a lot to me. I've been married for over 20 years. So I would just like to remind Select Board Member Val and Seth that in the past, I've asked for Jack Cannelli's removal from the Zoning Board of Adjustment. So Megan, if you have any questions for me about that situation and why I asked for his removal, please feel free to reach out to me, and I can fill you in about all of that. So, you know, thanks again, and I just wanted to say thank you to Nancy. And congratulations to Val. So have a good night.
Thank you, Carol.
Thanks, Carol. All right, we are now in public comment, please. Two minutes per person.
Val, I'd like to do a public comment, if that's okay?
I don't see why not.
Okay, I just want to mention when we do, just for, just for a thought here, when we do appoint a Constable, there is possibilities out there of Constables that are, that, people who have the certification that comes with them constables that are, that, people who have the certification that comes with them to actually use their badge number, I believe it is, for a dispatch. Um, so it's something that we have in the past said that we weren't able to get dispatched because we gave it up. I think we spoke about that, correct, Sarah? And, uh, it's come to my attention that it's possible to, that certain people can bring that with them to the table. So it's just something I just wanted everybody to know. For possibilities in the future.
Thank you. I'll look into that.
Yes, thank you.
I could, I could add to that if now is the place and time, or if you prefer to wait.
Hi, Mark.
Just state your name, uh, you got two minutes.
Barrett, uh, Mark Fiore. Um, I recently just purchased a house in Mendon. Um, I'm also a certified police officer in the state of Vermont. I spoke to State Dispatch about, um, getting back on their dispatch system. And they said as long as the constable is NCIC, VCIC, uh, certified and is law enforcement certified, there's no cost to going back onto their dispatch system. And that was directly from one of the supervisors at, at State Police Dispatch. Um, she also said that because Mendon has been on in the past, uh, there shouldn't be any issue, um, as far as numbers and stuff like that. I also spoke to Whit Montgomery, who is the chief of police in Killington, and he said if there was an issue with that, um, he'd be more than happy to help and possibly put a constable um, under his police ORI for, uh, dispatch number. So that way we could, we could use the State Police Dispatch system. It would just be under the Killington PD ORI if Mendon doesn't have one. That's all I have.
Mark?
Yep, can you hear me?
What exactly is ORI?
Uh, it's like your originating agency number, like it basically, uh, the town of Mendon should have one. So if a constable were to request a criminal history, um, and have access to the NCIC system, like, uh, running license plates, um,
Okay.
Stuff like that, um, criminal histories, anything related to law enforcement duties as far as, um, information that you would get from running a driver's license, uh, running a license plate, uh, all stuff to that, that nature. Um, and in the past, it's always been either Phil or Nelson Tiff, um, who had that, that ORI number and NCIC access. They were, they had limited access, but they were, they were able, able to, um, they were able to access running plates and driver's licenses and whatnot.
Sure. Great, thank you.
No problem, Mark.
And thank you for your letter of interest.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Moving on to business. Uh, recap of the town meeting and election.
The town meeting was just fabulous.
Uh, so there were a couple of questions that, um, we have responded to. Um, we have, uh, posted, there was a question about health insurance rates and those have been posted on our website and front, or in Facebook pages, um, as far as what the town, uh, has for expenses there. And, um, there were a, a couple of people that asked about like the status of the pavement schedule, which is, um, printed in the town report under Highway Improvement Fund. Um, it has a schedule of when we're going to pave what roads and that it also is a fluid document, so we evaluate the surface of the roads annually and move the resurfacing schedule based, uh, accordingly. Um, we will be applying for, uh, a Class II roadway grant for resurfacing the notch road and so that will determine whether we get that grant, whether we resurface the notch road this year or next. I, I, I don't recall off the top of my head if there were other questions from town meeting that we should be following up on or, um, just to recap, all articles did pass.
I think health insurance was the number one concern, if I remember correctly, and we will be, um, diving into that this year in more detail.
Otherwise, um, uh, just a, a thank you to, um, Vtrans District Three for allowing use of the um, conference room and that it's, it greatly appreciated as we have limited options on where we can help hold town meeting.
I thought it went very well. Yeah, it is. It is. No, you're right, Val. I thought the town meeting went very well.
Nice to see such a big turnout.
Yeah, it was.
Nice, we had enough chairs.
Any other comment for the town office, town meeting?
Letter B, under business, employment opportunities. With a change of the full-time positions. We have two full-time positions available. Um, the building and grounds maintenance and highway maintenance and, um, that's one. And Nancy Gondello's position is now available or will be at the end of the month.
Which is the town clerk and treasurer, just to clarify.
Treasurer, yep, I was going to get there.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Have we, uh, uh, on the, on the, uh, building and grounds maintenance position, have we had any hits on that recently? Anybody? Any interest that you guys?
Yep, no, so, um, Seth, we need to re-advertise, um, the actual position that is open. Um, and we were, we're currently conducting 90-day review evaluations on the other two positions that were recently hired. And that, um, based on that, those evaluations, um, would determine which, which of the third position is available.
Okay.
Uh, so, moving forward, um, we need an interview committee for that third position. Um, on that committee will be myself and Chris Baird as the road commissioner. Um, but I wanted to, um, see who from the select board wanted to serve on that interview committee.
I don't mind being on that, Megan. I don't know if you want to, um, get your feet wet there and
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to. I just didn't know if that, you know, hiring for that posi- for that position, I mean, I should be fine with doing that. I, I like interviewing people.
I would also be happy to, to help on that if that's,
Yeah, why don't we have, you know, because it's, it's the date, you know, depending on the dates and things, at least one of us be there. So that would be one of the two of us.
We would like to move forward on that. Um, ASAP. So both of these positions will be posted and we'll move forward with the, the, um, accepting, um, applications and letters of interest, um, as soon as possible.
Very good.
Okay, letter C, grant applications. Oh, sorry.
Well, I guess before we go to grant applications, so are we going to have the same interview committee for the town clerk and treasurer position?
I'd like to be involved in that.
And I'll be a backup. I think Seth, you may have to excuse yourself from that.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so Val and I were on that committee, right, Val?
That's fine.
Great.
Perfect. Um, in the meantime, that, um, we are confirming with Nancy, um, the continuing, the continuance of operations, um, to make sure that, uh, we have the, um, proper system in place to, um, continue after she is no longer, um, working for us at the end of the month.
You'll be posting that job?
We will be, uh, yeah, posting that that is available and accepting letters of interest.
Okay.
And any other questions, just let me know and I'll be able to answer those for you.
Moving on to our grant applications.
Um, so this is the time of year that we have grant applications that are due. Um, just on our plate right now is the, um, Class II roadway and the structures grant that I'll be working with Chris, um, as the road commissioner to determine, um, what we'll be applying for under those grants. Um, the structures grant is typically a large culvert replacement project, which we have a few in Wheelerville and also oh, the one that was damaged on the notch road with the flooding last August. Um, so we'll just be prior tor- prioritizing that because we can only apply for one grant. Um, the Class II roadway program I mentioned earlier will be applying for the town line road, uh, resurfacing and, um, hopefully we'll be able to receive that this year. These grant, those two grants are given out on a, um, on a, a formula that the state has with, um, they, they try to spread the money out along all of the, among all of the District Three towns, so, um, it, it will depend on what grants we have received in the past, um, as well as the applications that are submitted this year on whether we're successful with those two programs. The other one is, um, the Emergency Operations Center Enhancement Grant that I'm working with um, Chris and Leamy on. Um, it would be to install a generator for backup power at the town garage. Um, the town garage is listed as our backup emergency operations center if the town office is not available. Um, and it would, the generation, generator would also keep the facility functioning in long-term power outages or, you know, when we don't have power. So, um, we'll be applying for those those three, but, um, stay tuned because this is the season that, um, the grant applications come out and I'll let you know if there's other opportunities available. Um, if you remember, we, we're leveraging the ARPA funds as much as possible by applying for grants for particular projects. So if there's another, um, grant that comes along that is, um, related to or one of our projects would qualify for, we would be jumping on that as well. Um, to leverage the funds from ARPA to get as many projects done as we can with those funds. Any questions?
How much, um, roughly or average between the grants would the town put forward? Is it about 10,000 that we would use per grant?
Uh, yeah, so the emergency operation grant, that's a 50/50 grant. Um, so they would pay 50% of the approved cost. For example, the generator at the town office was a $15,000 project and it paid for half of it and then half came out of the ARPA fund. Um, so it would, it's estimated to be a similar cost to the, um, town garage, but I haven't, we haven't received the quotes yet for that application, so I don't know exactly what that project cost is going to be. Um, the Class II roadway grant is an 80% split. So, um, the grant pays 80% of the cost and the Mendon pays 20%. And the structures grant, I believe, is a 90% split where the state would pay 90% of the cost and we would pay 10%. Um, those costs come out of the Highway Improvement Fund and the Bridge and Culvert Funds. Uh, so our, our matching funds are already in uh, the reserve funds.
Can you remind me what the structure grant is for?
The structures grant is for bridges and culvert maintenance for replacement. So, we look to replace large culverts with, with the support of that funding. So we, we might be anywhere between 50 and $175,000 on those projects. Um, there's a potential that the hazard mitigation grant would also pay for a generator grant. I don't know what the, um, what the funding split is yet on that, but it is something else that we're looking into to see if we, we can't apply for both for the same project, but we would look at, um, which one would fund the project more and which one we have a better chance of receiving.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions? Um, up next, we have the town office safety. The proposed modifications to the entrance to enhance the security, um, the changes in the, the structure there with the second um, doorway. Did everybody have a chance to look at the architectural drawings there?
Yes.
And we haven't received any numbers. We don't know that any numbers. We have a hand raised. Carol, you're muted.
Carol, you're still muted.
So I'm just wondering, so you're going to approve appropriations for money to be spent on the town and retrofit the office without approval from other residents? And you're just going to approve it?
We're not approving anything. We're simply talking about the, um,
The plans, correct?
Yes.
So, um, I just want to make sure that they are made available to the residents, that the cost to the town is made available to the residents. So everybody knows what's going to happen.
Should vote on it.
We should be able to vote on it. And we want a, an option to be able to petition town residents if we don't like what you're going to do to the town office. Because it doesn't belong to you. It belongs to everyone. So we just want to make sure that there are appropriations made, so if that, we don't like what you're going to do, that we can get a petition out and get enough signatures to say no. And that's, that's just what, we just want to make sure that that is available to us as citizens of this town that pay taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, can, can I chime in, guys? Uh, I apologize for coming in late. Um, I, my planning commission meeting ran a little long. Um, so hopefully you all have had, had, have had an opportunity to look at the plans. Um, it's really a very elegant solution to getting the town offices, uh, open quickly. Um, and, um, given the, uh, the $30,000 threshold, uh, for spending, um, I spent quite a bit of time, uh, running contractors through here over the last week or so since we had the, uh, the, the print developed and, um, it, it, it's, uh, I've been assured that we can do this project for less than $30,000, which which would mean that it wouldn't, with the select board's approval, it wouldn't need to necessarily go out to bid, which would further delay the process. I, I, I have a set of contractors lined up that would be able to commence work April 1st and, you know, it's probably a two or three-week process to, to get this done. So far, all the time spent on it has been donated to the town. And it's really a very elegant plan. The plans are available here in the town and I think I've emailed them to as many people who would like to see them, as well as, you know, the complete select board. It's, and it, it's not unlike what many of the towns are currently doing. They're, you know, just given the current heightened sense of, of awareness and security, not only in Menden but throughout the state, throughout, throughout the country. This is not an unusual step to be taken to just ensure the safety of of, of, you know, the town employees and to be able to get the office opened back to regular hours to conduct regular business and to ensure safety for employees and, and the town residents. The, the key to this, and I can't stress this enough, is that the folks that I have currently lined up are, you know, everybody's busy and to try to get estimates out of anybody at this point is going to further delay this process to the point where I could see us still having this discussion in August. I've got a group of exceptional players ready to, you know, essentially ready to go. And I just, I cannot stress enough that, you know, I, I, I'm appealing to the select board to approve this, so we can get this going and, you know, hopefully by the end of April, you know, we'll, we'll have protocol and action, actionable results that will, you know, allow residents to come in and transact normal business without an appointment and not, and without having the need for law enforcement present when this is happening. And, and, you know, just again, the point in case, the planning commission meeting tonight was so cumbersome because we couldn't access files. I couldn't share files with folks that needed information. You know, this, this, conducting these meetings remotely is, is really deterring the process and the planning commission is in the middle of, of a zoning rewrite and it's imperative that we have the ability to, to be able to meet in person. And this design, it's a really elegant, cost-efficient design, will enable us to do this. I, I, I just can't stress enough that I, I, I need you folks to take action on this and move it forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions if, if anybody has any, any questions regarding that. And if not, I just wanted to bring up, there was a second
I guess, Steve, do we have a bid? I mean, do we have a bid on the project?
Yeah, so Megan, I, I was hoping to have it for you tonight. I will absolutely have numbers for you before the, the next select board meeting. Line iteming, you know, all the functions of the, of the renovation. And we're, we're quite certain we can keep it under the $30,000 threshold and it will follow the, the plans that I distributed almost, almost exactly. There is one mistake on the print. I just want to point out that the, it says to move existing doors and windows to new walls. The new wall that's going to be moved forward to the entrance to Sarah's office, there aren't going to be any windows in that and it's going to be a reinforced door. And then we're going to have a transaction window that is, that they actually make these as a, as a pop-in type unit. It's a stainless steel framed transaction window. That's exactly what it's called. It has a reinforced acrylic window. It has a transaction tray, if you will, underneath it and you just kind of pop it into the framing and sheet rock right around it. It's, it's, it's a very elegant solution. And Lisa, are you waving at me?
So first we had, we had Carol's hand up first and then Lisa has questions after that.
Okay.
I think Carol's trying to unmute.
So, you know, realizing that this isn't anything that's going out for bid, is any of you aware of the East Ridge Circle about their situation where they don't have pumps for water if their houses catch on fire? But you have $30,000 to spend to retrofit the office. But, but, but
I, I don't understand the analogy.
Money that contributes. Please don't talk in, while I'm talking, Steve. You do realize that the fix for East Ridge Circle is like minimal. It's not a lot of money. And that's a hazard for people and safety in the community and I cannot believe that you are willing to spend $30,000 to protect yourselves and not protect other residents in this community. It's disgusting to me.
Even though there is no threat.
And there is no credible threat.
That was all just a lie.
There is no credible threat. There's nothing from the authorities saying that anybody has ever been threatened in that town. So don't tell me these lies anymore. And don't spend my money to make my town office look like an abortion clinic. It's disgusting what you're doing.
So Carol, to answer your question, I, I'm actually not familiar with
Hey Steve, just to talk in front of you, you're full of shit.
Let Steve talk.
Okay.
Okay, we, you know.
So, so if I could chime in just because I, I'd like to educate Megan as this is her first meeting. Megan's
Please, Sarah, educate Megan for me. Educate.
Let Sarah talk.
To mute. Easter Acres submitted a request under the ARPA funds to dredge their ponds in Easter Acres.
Yeah, I was at that select board meeting when he originally came in and requested that money. Rich, when Rich did his original presentation, I happened to be there that night.
Yeah, we have documentation from the Rutland City Fire Department that tests the dry hydrants annually and that those hydrants have met the water source rate per minute required to be able to fight fires in Menden. So that information was incorrect. The proposal that Steve has in front of us is based on a, a design that is similar to the Castleton Police Department. If you go over to Castleton, this, you can see what this entrance way would essentially look like. It has a similar layout to what our entrance way vestibule looks like now. And so it was the least costly way to secure the building, but you can definitely see what, an idea of what it would look like by going over to Castleton.
Sarah, and also
The only comment that I had, Steve, the only comment that I had on the, on the plans was there was, it indicated that there would be two counters in the vestibule. And I'm just wondering if the counter on the other side is necessary.
There would need to be just a short extension, Sarah, on the vestibule side of the transaction window of a counter.
Oh yeah, I liked the counter on the window side, but on the other side, I didn't think it was necessary.
Oh, and it may not be. It was just put in there as a place for residents to fill out forms and, you know, that sort of thing, you know.
Right, and if the counter extended the whole length of the wall on the left-hand side, that they would have opportunity to be able to do that, keeping the other side clear to just make sure that we have as much clearance as possible for handicap accessibility.
Right, you're absolutely right, Sarah.
Good point.
We, we haven't, obviously, we would have to get a permit through DFS and that would require all ADA accessibility requirements. So in fact, that counter may have to go away. You're absolutely right. But Sarah, I had a question for you. The, the money's, well, actually, it's a actually, it's a moot point. You already answered it. So strike, strike the question.
So, I mean, again, I'm going to use this opportunity to educate Megan because this is her first meeting, but the, the funding for this, we have received ARPA funds. These are federal funds that were provided to the town of Menden, not from the taxpayers of Menden. And it would be an eligible expense under the ARPA rules from the US Treasury Department. We also have reserve funds that are at the discretion of the select board, already approved by the voters. And so there is a town office maintenance fund that would provide funding, you know, some funding for a project like this as well. So those are the two funding sources. If, if the project cost goes above $30,000, we're required from our procurement policy to follow a different bidding procedure, as well as, you know, if it requires a bond to do improvements, then that requires voter approval through a bond.
Right.
And Lisa had a question.
Hi, I have a few. Number one, AC and heat, air conditioning and heat system in that vestibule, is that included in that program? That bid, did we have to rearrange what we have? If you're, you're blocking an existing AC heat vent stuff, do you change the dynamics within the building? Has that been looked at at all, do we know?
Yes.
Yes, what?
So Lisa, what we're going to do is we're going to put in an electric wall heater to heat the area and we're not overly concerned about air conditioning as a typical time spent conducting a transaction wouldn't warrant that type of expense.
Okay, and since we're going to put an electric heater in, have we figured out what the cost is per month, per year to heat that room? The cost to the funding and, and budget for the building?
Right, so there's no question it'll increase the electrical cost. It wasn't deemed significant. That came from Steve Phan, who's the architect who drew those plans up.
We know what significant is because my significant and your significant may be two different things and the town's significant, the voters', may be two different things.
I can do a, based on the size of the heater, the kilowatt usage on the heater, I could do a projection of what the cost of operation is. Alternatively, we could choose not to heat it.
And how does that work out? Okay, so that, that's something I think maybe you should put that in with the, you know, that's my opinion as, as a taxpayer. I'd like to know when we change something, what is the total effect of it? Also, you mentioned, you said, what was this price coming in at about, you said?
The high twenties.
Okay, and Sarah, if we go over 30, what happens?
Um, that's the threshold for our purchasing policy and we'll have to go out to a formal bid process.
Okay, now, I understand that it's that high twenties, but you also said in your conversation that there's a possibility of going a little higher. So what happens if it goes to 35?
So Lisa, the way the contractor is going to be structured, it's going to be billed on a time and material basis, not to exceed $30,000.
And what happens if he needs more equipment, more product or anything and it's now 35? What happens then? All I'm asking, or 31, 30?
The dynamic of a not-to-exceed contract is all-inclusive. So if there are savings that are, if the contractor is able to buy materials more competitively, the labor comes in under what he estimated, those savings are then given back to the town. And the not-to-exceed means that he's going to deliver the finished product, not to exceed $30,000.
Okay, that's the end of my questions, I believe. My husband, David, had a question, I believe.
David, Lisa, we can't hear David.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
He said that he believes it's self-serving not to put it out to a bid because
I just think it's ridiculous to, 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 not to put out something to a bid. I don't care whether it's, it's a dollar or $30,000. I think you should put it out to a bid. I, I, and number two, I don't, and I agree with Megan. I mean, I know where this thing started. I know where it went. But you do not have a credible threat. It sounds stupid, but you don't have it. Or Carol, I, I, I don't think you have a credible threat. It's not documented. You don't have any backup for it. So you're spending $30,000 for nothing.
Well, David, can I, can I chime in on that? It's not just one specific threat. There's a lot of town offices and a lot of municipal buildings that apply this now in their entryways.
Yeah, okay, you're going to do the entryway.
There's also migrants who, who, who frequent the parking lot in the summertime. I've seen it. I've witnessed it. For what we're doing, we are upgrading and yes, we are spending money on something, but given the situation we're in right now, let's move forward and get this office open. So what? It makes the office better. It does not make it look like an abortion clinic. I can guarantee you that, as that term was.
Wait, wait a minute, no. Open the office. Just open the freaking office. What's the big deal?
Yes, just open the office.
Wait a minute. You're going to open the office, so open it. Just open the freaking office.
I, if I could chime in.
I, I think what Closed for a year, for nothing.
Could we please raise our hands? One person speaking at, speaking at a time.
Unfortunately, I don't have a camera, so I can't raise my hand. But I just wanted to say that the, I'm afraid that if these improvements aren't made, we're going to end up with no employees in this building, number one. Number two, to what I said earlier and what Seth just reinforced, this is a commonplace occurrence and, and in most town offices now. This is not unique to Menden. You know, and number three, regard, you know, regarding the credibility of the threat, obviously, it, it, it was it was certainly credible enough that town offices have been closed for a year and operating under very strict protocols. So this is a way to move forward and get it open. Lisa, I see your hand. Hang on for one more second. Just in terms of addressing Dave's concern about it going out to bid, this is an effort to move this along rapidly, trying to line up contractors at this time of year for this type of project is, is going to be a very laborious process and it And um, uh, it 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 it's going to delay getting the building back open for normal operations even further. Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay. I have no problem securing any building because we do live in turmoil times. Unfortunately, quote, you, I believe, told us there was a threat. Then you took it back, so we have no evidence of it. You're the one who said it. I'm putting it out there, and I don't really care who knows at this point right now because I am tired of our office being closed. Our staff could not do anything. The townspeople are paying for a building that's sitting there. I'm tired of it. But you know what? If there's no threat, Steve, then we don't need to do any of this. If there was a threat, you need to come and make the, you said right now there was a credible threat. Again. Okay, so I'm done. You guys have to figure out how to open the building. But to take 30,000, $26,000 without getting a second bid on it, and I know we don't have to according to our procedures of of the state of Vermont or the federal government or wherever it is, but for this type of thing, you're going to pick the first contractor that comes along, and Steve, you may have a great business with him, but no one else might not. And we want the best for the town, so we may want to take a second bid, a second look at something, maybe a second design if this design doesn't meet what everyone wants. Listen, I did go to Castleton, I did look at it, Sarah, and it is a great design. And I think it is great, but unfortunately, I just feel a $26,000, we should put it out for a bid. Or at least, you know, t- talk about it, let people see the plans. You know, I mean, that's-
Okay, 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 can I interrupt? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Lisa, can I interrupt? We're getting a little out of hand here with this. I mean, we're 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 having this long discussion for what here? Okay, we we, there will be further talk about it. Let's just move forward with our meeting this evening. Is that okay with everybody?
Well, God, we don't want to move ahead when you're when you're defaming people over and over again accusing them and still saying there's a goddamn credible threat at the office when there never was. But you ran the resident's name through the mud for nothing.
And it was mentioned at the town meeting on Monday.
Before, on Monday night, just so happened, it was the what, the husband of somebody who was running against you, which was pretty nasty.
That's election interference.
That's election interference, and it's just downright nasty.
Uh, okay, so that's not even germane to what we're talking about right now, Brian. Um, and ultimately-
Hey Steve, since you're the one who made the threat or said there was a threat, why don't you make it known publicly since you got a big mouth in private?
Uh, I'm not even going to dig and find out whether it's fun.
Okay, that's enough, that's enough.
Well, isn't he-
Ultimately, it's the select board that is going to make this decision. Um, so my presentation um was uh for their benefit uh as well as all the townspeople. Um, and uh, it was just to fast track uh this process. If the select board feels that a competitive bid is necessary, then so be it. I will do whatever, uh, I'll be guided by whatever decision the select board ultimately decides.
It's like hiring your friends again, it don't make any sense.
Can we move, can we move, can we move forward here?
As the town administrator-
We always want to move forward.
That's enough, that's enough.
That's right, that's the job.
This is, it's, that's enough discussion.
So my recommendation as your town administrator is to follow your procurement policies and move forward with a decision with the project.
Thank you, sir.
How about following the rules and the ordinances, like making people pay for an appeal?
We have policy, mute yourself, mute yourself.
The select board rules of procedure, guys, okay? Let's let's just move along.
So, um, the second item, uh unfortunately, I don't have as much information. I just um had been receiving of a lot of uh inquiries, if you will, as to the status of the former Econo Lodge. And Fred Bagley from the Planning Commission and myself had a uh an appointment scheduled uh at 1 o'clock this uh previously this afternoon. Uh, unfortunately, with the uh uh new owner, developer, contractor, uh, it's all the same person. Uh, as to what their intent was, um, uh, given that this is the same ownership structure, same people uh who are currently operating uh the former Holiday Inn, now called the Cortina in Rutland Town. Um, and given the uh issues that that uh we've uh that they've encountered uh with that facility, uh, there's rightfully a lot of concern about what could be happening with uh the Econo Lodge. Um, so uh, they do in fact have uh all the necessary permits in place through the state for the work that is being performed. Um, they don't require a permit through the town because they're not altering the physical appearance or the footprint of the building. We don't have any regulation as to what um they're doing inside. Um, however, we wanted the owner to uh 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 indicate to us whether they were going to operate under the guise of the um uh existing permit, which is hotel use um versus any type of uh long-term rental and or voucher program, uh, which would require a planning commission review. Um, and, you know, there's concerns about how that may uh impact uh uh folks attending uh children attending local schools um about uh having uh pedestrians out on Route 4. You know, what are they doing for transportation, et cetera, et cetera. But um, all I can tell you at this point is that uh they were actually looking for a CO through the state today. Uh, and uh, the director of uh GJ Gero, the director of the Department of Public uh Department of Fire Safety uh for Rutland Region, um, you know, invited us along because we are uh an interested party, obviously. Um, that has been rescheduled for Thursday, so I'll be able to provide you with more information uh after that meeting. That's it.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome, sir.
Um, so Val, if there's no other business, you would adjourn the select board meeting and convene the liquor control meeting in order to discuss the Vermontian's liquor license.
Um, will you bear with me? Okay, I will adjourn the select board meeting, my charger, um, my computer's about to die, it's actually plugged in. And I just had some reinforcements thrown at me. I just need to change my charger.
The select board meeting adjourned at 7:13, and um while she's doing that, another another select board member can call the um liquor control board meeting to order. So Seth, why don't you take over with that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Steve. Do we need, do we need to do a motion for that, is it, Sarah?
No, you just call the meeting to order.
Okay, I'd like to call the uh liquor control meeting to order, Val.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And so the application in front of you um that Nancy emailed earlier today, which is um to approve the liquor license for the Vermontian. And that would entertain a motion to approve.
I will make a motion to approve the liquor license um that we have received for the Vermontian.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Thanks.
Now you just adjourn the liquor control board meeting and we'll be done.
I will adjourn the liquor control board meeting at 7:15.
Thank you, everybody.